Call this meeting to order, the Rockledge City Council. Regular council meeting Wednesday, November the first, 2017, and it is 6:00 PM. City Clerk, you want to call the roll, please?
Mayor Price.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Ferguson.
Here.
Councilman O'Neil.
Here.
Councilman Forrester.
Here.
Councilman Daskey.
Here.
Councilman Hartzell.
Here.
Uh, City Attorney Nick Leir.
Here.
City Manager Petro.
Here.
Thank you. Please stand for invocation, tonight will be by Councilman Hartzell, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Uh, my church recognizes today as a holy day, All Saints Day, and I'd like to just ask for the guidance of all the saints in heaven and, uh, Christ and everyone to show us the way in our deliberations, show us the way in guiding the city to be better than it is, and just to be good people. I ask that, we pray to our Father in this request. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. In the name of the Kingdom, power and glory forever and ever. Amen.
Amen. Josh Spivey, come forward. Josh is with Troop, Boy Scout Troop 321, he's gonna be leading us with the Pledge of Allegiance. Salute the flag. Go ahead, Josh.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Josh, appreciate it. Y'all may be seated. The City Council has before them the minutes of the regular meeting on October 18th, 2017. What's the pleasure to counsel?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on October 18th, 2017.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay, we have one presentation today. Certificate of Commendation presented to Stephen H. Wilson for receiving the 2017 Central Florida Humanitarian Award for his efforts on behalf of children battling pediatric cancer. Congratulations, Steve.
Please allow me, Mr. Wilson, an opportunity to share with the audience a little bit about Steve and this award, and why he is so deserving. What started with a few words of encouragement for a young woman fighting for her life, transformed into a worldwide barrage of emotion for teenager Julie Spurlock. When Steve Wilson heard that his friend's daughter was battling cancer for the second time in her short life, he wanted to do something to lift her spirits. After some consideration, Steve started asking friends and family members to send video clips and shout-outs of encouragement, demonstrating support for Julie's fight. Because the response was so overwhelming, Steve then contacted Brevard County Sheriff, Wayne Ivy, U.S. Congressman Bill Posey, Colonel Danny McKnight, and other well-known community leaders. When they all answered the call, Steve quickly escalated his quest and asked Florida Governor Rick Scott to send a message of support. Governor Scott not only sent a video, he also invited Julie to visit him in Tallahassee. Now Steve was on a mission. When then-Vice Presidential Candidate Mike Pence was campaigning in Melbourne, through his connections with Space Goes Daily, Steve asked him to join Julie's rapidly growing horde of well wishers. Pence did a video, and another invitation was extended, this time, to the White House. Since that time, Steve has since contacted politicians, musicians, college and professional athletes, actors, and individuals from all over the globe. To date, 330 enthusiasts have said yes to Steve's request for videos, and scads of athletic merchandise, handwritten letters have also been sent to Julie. Wilson has vowed to continue gathering video clips until Julie beats cancer again. Steve's only goal, to bring a smile to her face and to raise awareness about the need for more funding and research for pediatric cancer. Steve's efforts on behalf of Julie demonstrate how just one individual can have a widespread impact, and for his ongoing efforts, Steve will be presented with the 2017 Central Floridian Humanitarian Award from Space Goes Daily tomorrow evening at a banquet. Congratulations, Mr. Wilson.
Steve, on behalf of myself, as Mayor of the City of Rockledge, and the City Council of Rockledge, I present you with the City Pen.
Oh, this is great.
And the City Challenge Coin as well.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Let's have a picture of your friend.
Haven't we heard that before?
Mr. Mayor, before Mr. Wilson sits down, may I make a comment, please, sir?
Please. Yep.
Mr. Mayor, Council, and citizens of Rockledge, Mr. Wilson, to me, is a hard worker for the city, and a most professional individual, and I'm of the opinion that he's most deserving of this, and this award that he's been given. He's one of a kind, you see him all over the city, Rain, Irma, Mary, Joe, anyone, he's there, looking out for this city of Rockledge and doing his job. He's quite a gentleman, and congratulations, Steve.
Good. Amen.
Mayor, before he sits down, a couple of years ago, he came up with, they have the St. Baldricks event, where you raise funds to shave your head. I've yet to figure out the concept of shaving my head, and I got money for it, but he was able to convince a number of people from the city to raise those funds, the mayor and I included, uh, for the St. Baldricks. Steve used to have a full head of hair, except he liked being bald so much, he kept it shaved off.
This is true.
It is true.
Low maintenance, now, or no maintenance?
High profiling. But anyhow, he, this isn't something new, he's been doing this for a while. Proud to call him my friend.
Thank you, sir.
Great, Steve, thank you.
I think that's when I shaved my head the first time.
Okay, our next presentation is Scott Mingenet.
Nature took care of that.
With the Vice President of Kimley Horn, he's gonna give, for the people that are here, you're gonna see something very exciting what's gonna happen in Rockledge, hopefully in the next year, two years, three years, is our new civic hub, next door on the property that we purchased, but he's gonna give a presentation tonight.
Scott Mingenet, Kimley Horn, 33, 3660 Maguire Boulevard, Orlando, Florida, with Kimley Horn, and I guess one more, Steve, shout-out to Julie, there's 331, but I'm sure everybody else wanted to give a shout-out to Julie as well, incredible story, thanks. We've done a, first, thank you for an opportunity to get here and kind of, again, readdress this exciting project. We've been in kind of a multitude of dialogue with council staff over the course of this time, so we're not gonna really revisit too much history, we certainly want this to be a dialogue. In front of you, you have a full set of plans, we have a snapshot of those plans on the presentation here, in front of you, we have some samples of pavers and some other materials that will be used, so certainly, as much as you want us to interrupt and create a dialogue, we certainly will engage in that process and answer any of your questions that we have. So I wanted to just walk through these, but I don't want to waste your time on anything, 'cause I know you've been kind of educated on the process, but feel free to interrupt us as we go along. So I'm gonna just start off real quickly, and for the audience or whatever, I just want to start off with a real quick snapshot of the overall plan. Let me get my pointer.
While he's doing that, for the audience, just know that that's the property directly to our east, adjoining the City Hall parking lot, on the north side of Barton.
City Hall parking lot is here, Barton Boulevard is down at the bottom of the page, and the property is kind of where you see all of those trees there, the existing dumpster and parking lot extends right here to the back. Also with me this evening, I'm sorry, is Wes Rogers from our office, one of the landscape analysts, uh, working, and he's done really all of the heavy lifting on all of the plans and drawings that you see along here as well, so he's been actively involved, and he'll kind of direct the show as we kind of work our way through the plans. I did want to highlight a couple of things, if you turn in your set, it should be C 4.0 is the, the plans that we're at. We've made a number of modifications, still, the big idea was generated around the potential artwork that we have going in the center, that artwork epitomizes and generated the idea that the coordinates of Rockledge were a part of a crescent and an overall ordinance, where this location sits would be the coordinates of the actual world coordinates for Rockledge. So all of this design elements have been really shaped and formed, to not only, uh, kind of go hand-in-hand along with that, that concept, but also the materials that we've been selecting have been tried to be true to what Rockledge is about, materials that you would see, whether indigenous to Rockledge, or materials that were really brought in to, to go hand-in-hand with that. The concept really is to have a, a stage or amphitheater at one end, an amphitheater, we'd have a synthetic turf multipurpose facility, working in kind of a crescent where this egg shape and the big oval intersect would be this sculpture, which represents kind of the coordinates for Rockledge. Uh, we have some specialty paving that acts as a crescent to highlight those areas. The main, uh, portion of the, the walkway that circumvents the entire park, we would have vendor tents that would be placed for special events, we've just allowed, mainly you would see just a, a 10-foot sidewalk that progressed all the way around the project, with a big open space, so that we had flexibility, so that even if you did had, you know, 60 to 80 vendor tents throughout the year, or not throughout the year, for a special event, you would still have the opportunity to do something special in the middle, for all those 24/7 activities, for somebody to come out there, throw a frisbee, read a book, or drop a blanket and have a picnic. So you would still have those kinds of opportunities. We do have some signage up front, right along Barton Boulevard, as well as some monuments at either end, that kind of, again, represent the, uh, the nature of the park, that kind of bookend and formate, form, uh, gateways to the park. We also have a couple of bathrooms that would be located on the backside of the facility, you'll see later on, we have a series of, of lighting and some audio equipment that will be controlled and located at the back of the stage facility. There's a number of seating and some other things, let me quickly, and again, I'm just gonna blast through some of these detailed drawings, let's go to sheet 5.0, I wanted to point out just some of your drainage concerns, and point out some of the things that we have, a benefit of, we were very fortunate to be in the Barton Park Stormwater Basin. That means we don't have to spend our money on pre-treatment and/or attenuation for the stormwater facility. All we have to do is get that stormwater to this back pond, and it's already taken care of because of the, somebody's wise thinking by doing the treatment facility in Barton Park, uh, so that is a big savings to the project, and really a, a great opportunity for the park to be located right here as well. So obviously, there's some stormwater, I just wanted to highlight that. We have been ongoing with the district, the St. John's Water Management District, to make sure that, 'cause we initially had a pre-application sum almost a year or so ago now, but they have looked at the site, Dean, there's no wetlands or any other obstacles would be a hindrance to the development of the project, and so we'll continue forward and do what they call just a minor application, for a minor modification, to show the additional pervious area, so we ought to be great. When you give us the thumbs up, we can go right in, should have no permitting issues with the district. Real quickly, if you turn over to the next page, too, you'll see grading plan, which is 5.1, I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. Again, we have a berm that kind of along this back edge, uh, we do want to save a couple of big trees, so you can see these contours, and there's a big gap of those contours right there, that's in an effort to save some larger trees, um, so again, we, we feel like we've, we've saved some of these trees, plus also one down here at the terminus of the project. We are going to, with landscape, have a buffer along this back edge and a lot of enhancements, but the grading plan allows for us to save a couple of those trees. I think it was either Planning Commission or Council, one of the other presentations, along this Barton Boulevard and this sidewalk area, they asked for some added berms and some low seating, so we've added those, and you can kind of see that these berms ramp up to a low 30-inch seat wall, so that as you're visiting the park, you can sit on these, and it's, it allows for extra crowd overflow and some other things. Flip over to kind of the next page, let me just walk you through a couple of things on the utility plan that is continuing ongoing, we have included some, you've got sanitary sewer that flows from City Hall down along this back edge for your bathrooms, which is super convenient because of, you know, it's less cost to be incurred for the park, so that was very good, we've worked out through, and we still need to continue to work out some details on the reclaim service, as well as the water service that was already along this area, so we don't have to go and retap the facility again, hopefully that's being accounted for within the system, uh, and the savings to the project, and you'll notice on this plan, too, down here in this little detail, is a quick coupling detail, we work with staff at maintenance, thinking about how you're gonna, you know, wash down after event, a market, a festival, so we have these quick couplers strategically located around the perimeter, so there'll be ease of maintenance and ongoing operations. You can kind of flip over to that next page that we'll look at, I wanted to highlight the hardscape plan, and that plan outlines kind of all of the finishes and materials and what things are going to look like. So that's sheet L 1.01 in your set that you have, and these are big sets, I'm just giving you the highlights, if you, you need to go back through at a later time and look at them in greater detail, uh, and so this set just gives you, what's the finish, what's the material, how much of it is there, uh, and we do have some samples over here to the side, if you want to say, well, what is an aggregate finish, or a shale aggregate? This is, this is an actual paver, but this is, uh, what we're doing is not a paver, but it's actually embedded into the concrete, so it gives that rocklidge texture, I mean, it's got some shells, you can feel it and touch it later, we'll kind of leave this here for you, we're just rocking this to show you, kind of what we're looking at, and it's still a gray sidewalk material, unless anybody wants to take it or pass it.
Leave it here, yeah, okay.
But we, we have a couple of those things, and I'll, I'll highlight a couple of those as well. Turn to that, kind of the next quick page, wanted to highlight a couple of things on the, the signage plan, which is L 1.04. Again, Wes, if you could scoot that picture, there you go, right off the top, I wanted to highlight that one image that we've got right now. Again, we're trying to use materials that we would think that would be indigenous, uh, this is what they call a coral rock, so we're using large slabs of this coral rock, it's actually mined, it's pretty inexpensive, but you get a massive kind of look in a 3-by-4-by-5, and we're stacking them to create this rocklidge sign, uh, that we, we thought, we're trying to play not only on the word "rocklidge," but get materials, and again, some of those materials, now this is a real travertine, but this is a slightly different material, but I brought these 'cause they look basically like this. So the material looks similar to this, and you'll see on the walls that we'll get to in just a minute as well, we have a veneer. Those veneers are gonna have a similar material texture that's gonna look like. Now, the veneer that we're using is a true veneer, so it's a manufactured product, this is a real product, but it's supposed to look, you know, very similar, we just happened to have this in the office to bring and touch and see kind of what you're looking at. Next, let's flip over and let me just highlight a couple of things on L 1.06. And I just wanted to, this is a minor detail, we really only have one tree of that, Wes, can you get to, oh, did I skip a page on you? Go to 1.06, Wes. Yeah, I just wanted to highlight one of the things that we're doing, so, I mean, I'm not gonna get into detail on all rebar and, and wall and details and things of that nature, but you can see on each one of these walls, it lists out the exact, uh, material, and, and we can work through staff on selecting final materials, and even when we get to the very end, there can be some cost efficiencies, you know, if we're trying to work through budgets and some other things, we can get the, the look we want, but get, maybe get a slightly different veneer that may be fitting within our budget, and we'll work continually through the design process, and all the way into construction, to make sure that those numbers come, 'cause the veneers and some of those things could be a, a big budget item. Zoom back out again, real quick, I wanted to highlight, too, we're also doing a flexi-pave material in any tree pit that is within a walking area. Flexi-pave is a rubberized material, but it basically makes so that there is no tripping or ADA, there's no mulch in and around those palm cutouts. So if they are in the middle of a sidewalk, we're trying to think about these major gatherings, that major synthetic turf area is probably 4,500, 5,000 square feet, if you give each person about 10-by-10 square foot, or maybe a, a 4-by-6 laid out a blanket, that's about 200, 250 people laying around, you could probably even maximize it by 500 people, so we want to make sure that any area is in a tripping hazard or some other things, and then make sure we're dealing with ADA constraints as well. So we've highlighted that, uh, as well as the material that we're using in a couple of different locations. Again, I'll wrap it up, uh, just quickly on a couple of things, wall details on 107, again, it highlights some of the veneers we're using, we give specific names, we've, we've listed right now J&amp;N Stone, uh, but again, it's a veneer that has a true type, whether it's an ashlar pattern or some other things. On L 108 is some of the finishes, to give you that whole suit that we're trying to give, you know, the, the tans and the buffs and the natural elements that we think is appropriate for a park. Still using gray, standard gray sidewalk, but maybe doing a pattern that just adds a little bit of texture and element to it, but keeping the cost efficient, and then adding that shale aggregate in that specialized crescent area to add a little pop and accent feature there. And then again, you see kind of your standard Duhmore benches, trash receptacle and bike racks that are kind of in a family of design that work well with one another. Flip over to that next page, you see on L 109, we've got a highlight of the, about a 20-foot light pole, uh, and we have two flag poles, a 30-foot and two 20-footers on either side at the main center of the park, and, and then the light poles are very similar in design to the ones that you have right on Barton Boulevard, however, the selection for these, we've chosen, it's an aggregate concrete. Again, trying to keep with those materials, instead of doing a, a cast product, which you have out front, we, we're emulating the same design, but now we've gone to a pre-cast concrete, so we can still play with that as we come back in on budgeting and pricing. But, but it's a drop LED fixture, very high efficiency and cost-effective, and it looks very similar to what you have adjacent to the site. Landscape plan on sheet L 2.01, again, not, not a ton of material, I do want to highlight a couple of things that we've worked through with staff, originally, we had these palms kind of going right through this paved area, and we were trying to develop, make sure that as we, you have some great activities, and you have a lot of people that come to some of these parks, so what we did is we took these trees, took them out of this crescent area, and ringed them so that it's kind of engulfing this egg shape along the main stage area, we moved these palms to the, to the back edge, to kind of, uh, reach their arms out and around and highlight this feature, but create a better sightlines all the way through. These canopy trees here are high-rise, so they're more conical, they're gonna get up a little bit higher, not your typical, and then on the back edge, we have typical live oaks, and then in the center, we have a zoysia grass, and then here is that synthetic turf. And I, and I brought just a sample of the synthetic turf that we're using as well, it's a, it's a very tight-knit product, uh, this has high compactability rates, 'cause if you're gonna have, you know, 2, 3, 400 people, we need to make sure that this doesn't look like it's matted down, we'll have a sand infill, and right now, we have it specified with what they call a hydrogel, um, material that actually keeps moisture, so that as the sun hits it, it actually has a cooling respiration process, so it's, it, it's not as hot as you get that black infill on some of your sports fields. So we're trying to think of that nature, if somebody's out there laying on it, or whatever, it's not as hot as some of those sports fields, if you've ever played on some athletic fields. So we have a couple of samples there, as well as materials. Uh, again, those materials are all highlighted in some of this, let's flip all the way to the very, close to the very end, ES 101, are we doing okay?
Yeah, you're all right. Everybody okay?
Um, site plan, photometrics and electrical on the ES 101 sheet in your plan, what we've highlighted in this plan is working through the photometrics, we're trying to make sure that we have pools of light, there are some gaps, but you'll see that, looking at the foot candles, that sometimes it gets down as low as 1.0 or 2.0 foot candles, typically on your streets, even in, in darker areas, you've got one or two foot candles of light. Now, that may not be sufficient for, you know, playing baseball, but we don't intend to be playing baseball here on this park, we're talking about pools of light, so we've worked with staff, and we actually reduced down the number of these light poles, the, the lines you see, the dark black lines, are just kind of the, the average throw and the distribution of the light, because they're more elongated and not circular in nature, to make sure we have proper coverage. Now, each of these lights have a duplex receptacle, both at the top and the bottom, so you could do any holiday lighting, um, you know, at the top or at the bottom, and we also have a banner arm insert for, you know, once you get some festivities or some other things going on, you'll have that opportunity. The last sheet I wanted to highlight was the audio page on SA 1.01, the yellow dots are about 33 or so mushroom little crowds, you've probably seen them at the retail store or maybe at another park, some other things, they're small, little, about 18-inch high or 12-inch high mushrooms, and they emit the audio, whatever you have playing, so we've got about 33 of those located, again, it's not meant to be a broadcast throughout the park, it's meant to be low-level audio that you can program, if it's, you know, if it's in December, maybe you have Christmas music, if you have Halloween, you know, you could do some other kind of creative things, and those elements would all home run back to this area where you could have a, even an iPod on a series of things taped into that, and, uh, or programmed into that for, for audio within the park. So that's a, that's a rough overview, I just hit a couple of things, I didn't want to get too much into, you know, the, the nuts and bolts of some of the engineering, but certainly want to open it up to questions that you might have.
Anybody have any questions? Scott.
Is it gonna be built where the Learning Academy? No, this site is immediately, if you walk out in the parking lot and you see those trees right across the way, you're right there where those trees are.
Is that Learning?
I, I don't know where the Learning Academy is, but I don't believe it's where the Learning Academy is.
I think that's back here in the back, yeah. That's back in the, yeah. Anybody from the council have any questions?
I have a couple.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, gonna be close to the Learning Academy, it sounds like. Um, the, um, I'm the one that brought up the berms when we first talked about this several months ago, and, can, can we go, yeah, um, down the lower left, right there, that's, that's your most, I, I guess, my imagination was taking me into a little more three-dimensionality than what I'm seeing here, with, with more of that type of feature, that, you know, 2, 3-foot high with the wall, as people wandered through the park, just to give it, I don't know.
So you're saying, not only in that kind of crescent or that eyebrow, but potentially in other locations?
Right.
Oh, I gotcha, okay.
Yeah.
So, um, we have a small one here, but we did not add a, a wall in this zone, because right immediately behind is, we are trying not to impact the number of tents. We initially had a ballpark of about 80, we had to reduce it down to about 67, 66, we wanted to keep this big tree over here, so we lost a couple there, we lost a couple in this area here, but we have it ringed on the interior and the exterior, all the way down to this little cul-de-sac sidewalk, all the way on the backside into here. So we felt like if we added it back to here, we would potentially impact or have water kind of coming back in, so we didn't have a wall on that section. We certainly could add it back in that, but that's one reason why we didn't have it in there. Uh, in this area, we left it as flat, especially if you have other vendors that want to come out, plus we had a requirement in the program for a 104... Plus, we had a requirement in the program for a 140-foot tent that would use for a special event, so that needed to be flat unless we, I forget what that event was for, but Wednesday, Friends Day.
Mr. Chairman, can I approach the? Go ahead. Again, I've seen this. Because we were trying to, well, if it could, if we remove these trees. Bound that whole area there, Frank?
Obviously, this whole area could be prepared, but we can also bound this and.
You have trees up in that area?
We did have a couple of these. Are these interims? You have trees? Okay. And also got a potential area up here that could. I was talking like when we were having an event that involved the stage, if this area here was burned about three feet or so, then people would be able to sit up here and see the stage very easily. Well.
But that's going to, that's going to affect our individual tents at center, wouldn't it?
Potentially. Wes, go back to the grading plan and I'll show you.
Have to take up the whole area.
Yeah, no, potentially, we could do a small one. I think what you're kind of saying is that maybe if we burn up to this exterior ring right here, we already have 10-foot allocation just off. What we were doing was a decomposed granite so that it had kind of a softer element when their tents weren't out there. And that's going to be most of the time. I mean, you know, even if you did 10 events a year that had, that would be a lot for tents. So we did the decomposed granite and a brick, a concrete curb at the back edge because you've got grass, a next decomposed granite is hard to maintain. But if you put a concrete header there, we could raise that concrete section to do a low wall and raise that whole kind of bottom crescent there and tilt back this way so that as you stood here, you kind of got a little amphitheater kick, you know, a little bit. We were doing that on the synthetic. You can see these contours, the synthetic, we kind of, we did a little bit of that, not much, just to give you a little bit of raise at the back. And we certainly could do it. Now, it would add more wall. Right now, you're probably talking even a low wall with a veneer, we were in the 185 a foot. Because it is retaining, it does have waterproofing, we do have storm drainage behind it to hit that area. So that's generally, I mean, don't quote me on the actual, but that was kind of ballparks that we were looking at for a structural wall with a veneer.
I was just trying to think of something that would give it more dimensionality rather than, you know, here in Florida, we tend to have so many parks that are just flat spots, you know, with grass growing on them or whatever. And that would give it a little more character, a little more dimensionality. Lisa's sitting over there cringing because she gets her tent moved somewhere else.
I definitely think, I think that would have more cost implications if we were to do what I just described. However, I do think that we could do some burming out in here. We did, we were trying to tie out to the, there's existing swale that runs down this edge right here. So we were trying to tie out to that line, but we could still burn up. As you can see, we kind of did a little bit, but protected that one tree. I'd go out and evaluate that tree, or staff could help us evaluate that tree. You know, is it worth it? Could we burn up a little quicker to get some of that, what you're talking about? Even dimple berms, I mean, 30 inches, three feet, I think is what you're talking about, right? Add a little bit of rolling, undulation. Those are great for people to sit on, throw a blanket on, you know, as well. It's not like it's going to impede any of that.
Right.
I think we could probably add, we do have some issues back here. We are trying to tie into the top of this existing area. You can see we've got some outfalls that we're trying to tie into so we don't incur cost into that storm drainage. But I think we could maybe add a little bit more of that dimple berm right in here. This, we actually had a concave area. We had it as a low spot to catch some of the storm water. But maybe if we rework some of these lines, we could raise it instead of inverting it and add some more dimple burming. I think from a cost effective and efficient, we'd be better off doing it here, maybe raising this up a little bit more and then this back area. This, it might start getting into a wall. But we can explore those.
I love the berms. I'm not a giant fan of the walls. With the berms, Dick Blake Park, our soccer complex off Gus Hip, when that park was built, part of our seating for spectators to watch soccer is a berm.
Right.
Just a hill, couple feet off the ground. It was a phenomenal idea. I'm not sure who came up with it, but smaller kids especially who aren't playing soccer lose interest in the activity that their parents are there to watch, and they would play on the berm. And having a little hill without a wall, because a wall would be hard surface if they did fall, they can roll up and down a hill and they had a ball. It's such a great idea. I put one in my backyard when my kids were little. I've still got it. My kids are in their mid twenties. They don't play on the hill anymore.
I definitely, I understand what you're saying, and I think, again, we can tighten the slopes up a little bit, get up a little bit quicker and then, then, you know, kind of taper off and then get back down.
I think it would work out, especially without the wall. It's a win-win.
Right.
The parents get something comfortable, the kids stay amused. Because when the kids become unamused, the parents have to leave.
And nobody's happy.
And nobody's happy.
Any other questions of the council?
I have one more.
Go ahead.
And that is lighting. You went over the lighting a little bit there, and my concern is that there isn't enough lighting in the evenings to, for people to feel secure.
Yes.
Walking through there.
Absolutely.
And I'm not a lighting engineer, so I can't tell from what your drawings are telling me whether that would be the case with your current.
We have about a 75 or 80-foot offset center. This is 20 feet. You'll have more than sufficient, even in the lowest, you can't read the, you know, you might be able to the plans that you have. But at the lowest setting in these gaps right here, we're at about one foot candle. One foot candle is more than you have on some of your roadways probably. So yes, that, we've worked with a lighting consultant that actually ran these. We increased the spacing to create the gaps because we were trying to play that balance between cost efficiency and safety.
So if one of our police officers was driving by, they could see what was going on out in the park?
Correct. And that's why I think it's a great, I mean, a lot of it, it's an old term, but we've used it for years, is SEPTED, Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. It's exactly what you're talking about. So they can drive through, see quickly, make sure people aren't hiding or whatever. So if we can keep these berms and walls low, it makes for a good, you know, eyes on the street are always good, eyes on the park.
Any other questions of the council?
Pardon me, one other, just to address lighting, we do have uplighting, landscape uplighting in a couple of key palms that, around the perimeter. So that will add to the character and the light.
Go ahead, Ted.
Left of the same picture is a parking lot just over here outside the yard. Right now, the single light that's there is not shown in the design, and it looks like it'd be removed. So I might need to extend the single lighting to the left there.
I'm not following you.
Right there, there's one light in the entire parking lot.
In the existing parking lot here now.
Parking lot, there's only one light there, and this doesn't even show that light. Maybe you need to extend lighting in that direction as well.
Understood. Because it might, maybe we go offset and come something back here and just turn and make this fixture a different, so it's not oblong to this side, it might go round.
Be oblong.
Yeah, yeah, we could probably handle it with that one pole so we're not incurring a cost. Either do a double head or do a photometric, I mean, a different light distribution so it's more round to get more distribution on the backside.
Wait in and out for the immediate parking.
Yes, you're right.
And I'm not sure how much other lighting is at the other. It may be an issue if there's only one light leading out to the general parking area. Along the back sidewalk, it's very low lighting, 0.1, 5, and 0.2 in the center along that park back walkway.
Okay.
That might be a concern, maybe.
Do you see this point, are they in these gaps?
I'm talking about further up along the sidewalk. And if people were using that after an event in dark, a little bit too much. So they need some sort of guidance.
We don't have a walkway out here.
Not a walkway right there?
No. That is just your property line. The only walkway we have is right here. This may look like a walkway, it was just some, that's a sanitary sewer line that we were regrading to stay atop, to make sure we didn't have any conflicts with our storm lines that cross over.
Any other questions of the council? Scott, I got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Talking about lighting, if we're going to be using LEDs, I like to have the LEDs you can change colors for events during the city like Christmas time and Halloween time and where you can change the colors on them.
We can do that on some of the uplighting.
Yeah.
The lights that we are using in this fixture do not have the ability to do color changing.
Yep, the uplighting would be fine.
The uplighting, you can have color programmable or light change, it can even kind of just kind of progress over time.
Right.
You know, so we can look at that on some of the landscape uplighting.
And I realize we're working on a budget and we're working on only 1.6 acres of land, but I still got a problem with not having a water feature. And I'm not talking about a water feature like Cocoa has, which is, you know, humongous, but they're dealing with a lot more acreage than what we are. And I realize it's expensive too, but some type of a small water feature somewhere. And I'm not talking about in the center either.
What about that low area there that he was talking about that he had in his plan?
Wherever. I think there should be some kind of a water feature that children can enjoy. And just the fact of running water in a park, it sounds good.
Sure, sure. We would like just a little bit of clarification. If kids are going to play in any feature in Florida, it then becomes what they call an interactive water feature, an IWF. IWF has the same filtration requirements as you would for a pool. It also has the same safety requirements as a pool. And for public municipalities and other things typically have restricted play or signage. So you start to get into kind of pool requirements. If it's just a fountain, that's the key word.
It's a water feature.
If we permit it as a water feature or a fountain that kids can, they're always going to get their hands on it, you know, do whatever. But as long as we don't, we don't have a safety issue or some other things, and we can permit it as a fountain, then we have a lot lower requirements for filtration, collection tanks, permanent pool, and some of those things with the Health Department. Because all of those go through the state of Florida.
Think in the terms of a fountain.
Got you.
All right. Anything else from the council? Scott, I want to thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Look forward to working with you in the future as well.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on. Financial budget report, there's none. Recommendation from Community Redevelopment Agency?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Dasky.
Move to approve the recommended amended fiscal year 2017 budget for the Rockledge Community Redevelopment Agency and direct staff to draft the appropriate ordinance and notice.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Public hearings, ordinance and resolutions. We have an ordinance, first reading, amending fiscal year 2017 general administrative budget. Who's going to give me this?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I offer an ordinance amending fiscal year 2017 general administrative budget for first reading of the ordinance by title only.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Mr. City Attorney.
An ordinance for the city of Rockledge, DeVar County, Florida, amending ordinance number 1693-2016 of said city to revise and amend in certain respects the general administrative budget of the city of Rockledge for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2016 and ending September 30, 2017 in light of changed circumstances since the time of the adoption of said budget. Declaring that invalidity of any portion hereof shall not affect the remaining portion of this ordinance, providing for the effective date hereof and for other purposes.
Thank you. What's the pleasure to counsel?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I move to authorize publication and a public hearing to be held on November 15, 2017.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. B, ordinance, first reading, amending fiscal year 2017 Community Redevelop, is that the one we already did? No. Community Redevelopment Agency Budget. What's the pleasure to counsel?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Dasky.
Offering an ordinance for the first reading titled amending fiscal year 2017 Community Redevelopment Agency Budget by Title Only.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Mr. City Attorney.
You'll notice I was able to get this typed up, written it in the agenda right after the, within the last two minutes.
That was very fast.
Efficient. An ordinance for the city of Rockledge, DeVar County, Florida, amending ordinance number 1697-2016 of said city to revise and amend in certain respects the Rockledge Community Redevelopment Agency budget of the city of Rockledge for fiscal year commencing October 1, 2016 and ending September 30, 2017 in light of changed circumstances since the time of the adoption of said budget. Declaring that invalidity, that any invalidity of any portion hereof shall not affect the remaining portion of this ordinance, providing for the effective date hereof and for other purposes.
It's a pleasure to counsel.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ferguson. I move to authorize the publication and a public hearing to be held on November 15, 2017.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. C, ordinance, first reading, amending fiscal year 2017 rental facilities budget. What's the pleasure to counsel?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I offer an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2017 rental facilities budget for first reading by title only.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Mr. City Attorney.
An ordinance for the city of Rockledge, DeVar County, Florida, amending ordinance number 1698-2016 of said city to revise and amend in certain respects the rental facilities administrative budget of the city of Rockledge for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2016 and ending September 30, 2017 in light of changed circumstances since the time of the adoption of said budget. Declaring that invalidity of any portion hereof shall not affect the remaining portion of this ordinance, providing for the effective date hereof and for other purposes.
Thank you. Pleasure to counsel.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Dasky.
Move to authorize the publication and a public hearing to be held on November 15, 2017.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Let's move on to reports from boards and committees. Who's giving that to me tonight?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Move to be in receipt of the minutes of the following meetings. Code Enforcement Board, minutes of regular meeting on October 12, 2017. The Rockledge Environmental Enhancement Board, Tree Board, minutes of regular meeting on October 12, 2017. The Council Administrative Personnel and Community Relations Committee, minutes of meeting on October 18, 2017. Citizens Recreation Advisory Board, minutes of regular meeting on October 19, 2017. Community Redevelopment Agency Board of Commissioners, minutes of meeting on October 25, 2017, and to consider independently any recommendations contained therein.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Let's move on. Our first recommendation is from the Council Administrative Personnel and Community Relations Committee, meeting of October 18. Recommend forwarding the special event ordinance to city council for approval. City Manager, want to talk about this?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. The admin committee reviewed a draft special ordinance, special events ordinance that would in essence simplify the process by which a special event would be approved. If it's a minor event, it would be the city manager's review and approval level. And if it's a major event, of course, it would be the city council's approval level. And so it was reviewed and the admin committee recommended it to the full council for consideration.
Okay, the council has this before them. They've read it. They've had a chance to study. Does anybody have any questions or the city manager? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, based on the report from the city manager and the meeting of the committee in which we attended, I recommend approval as so indicated.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. D Citizens Recreation Advisory Board, from October 19, 2017, recommendation, purchase of prefabricated sailcloth for the shade structure at Larry L. Schultz Park. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yes, the crab board had a significant discussion and review and is recommending to council to have a, an carefully engineered sailcloth material serve as the shade structure over partial or parts of the children's play area at the Larry Schultz Park. Uh, it could cost up to $30,000, but with that price tag, it would come back to council for review because that's over the city manager's spending authority. So you all would see the three different quotes and/or recommendation from staff to have the authority to approve or deny at that time. So back to you, Mayor.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Um, I have a couple of questions. Uh, the city manager and I discussed this earlier. I'm not sure we have the answers and, and, um, but my two questions, the main questions is how long will a structure of this last, the sailcloth? I mean, obviously with the sun, i- is it going to last a year, five years, 10 years? Um, so that's a big question on my mind. And again, with the price potentially being as high as $30,000, I understand part of that is the engineering upfront, but when it does come time to replace it, what will that cost be? Will it be, you know, 10,000 or would be 15,000? So those are two big questions that I have, uh, before I feel like I could go any further on, on this.
Back to my tenure on the recreation board from 91 to 2011, which is a long time. We discussed this. Uh, it was, came before the crab board then. There's no shade. There's absolutely no shade there. There's not a tree. Uh, this has been discussed.
Trees are just not mature enough yet.
And it won't be for a while.
A while.
Uh, this is a tot lot. It's not a larger kid's playground. It's a smaller kid's playground. And routinely with a smaller child, there's even potential for a smaller child in a stroller who's not on the playground. The crab board thought it was important then. I'm glad to see they brought it back. I'm not sure the cost differential, but once it's engineered and you get your poles up, if you did have to do a replacement, all you're replacing is the canvas. If the poles were properly set and in place the first time, so the recurring costs should be significantly less. I don't think the materials, the, the big part of this. It's the poles that hold it up. But I would also be interested in seeing what's it going to cost us in however many years, what's the warranty on it? And what's the replacement cost to have the new fabric installed?
Okay. Well, I'm sure the city manager is going to bring all that back to us before we ever approve this for a final, a final purchase. So anybody else have any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Having endured a couple of Memorial Day celebrations at that location, we put up temporary tents. It was inadequate for all the people who were there. And there's also the farmer's market that's there. They always bring their own tents on the Sunday event. Is there a need for more shade there until our trees are in effect?
Well, our recreation board apparently thinks there is.
Think so. I was wondering if we might want to expand that slightly, that just over, other than just the play area? If, uh, look at other options.
Okay. So what's the advice we're going to give or the direction we're going to give our city manager here?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I'd move to have the city manager go forward with, uh, soliciting bids, uh, not just the cost estimate, but a warranty of some description, uh, a full package and if that, uh, how do I want to put it? Any recurring cost, how long are you going to warranty it for? How is the warranty done? Is it prorated? And what would be the replacement cost, at least on today's dollars, to replace what you're going to put up?
Okay. Is that a motion?
It is a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Do we have any further discussion? Does everybody understand what we're doing here? We're given direction to the city manager to bring this back to us with final cost. This is only an estimate of 30,000. It could be a lot more. It could be a lot less. Seeing nothing else, I called a question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Reappointments and appointments, none. We do have an, no, reappointments, none. Appointments, we have one appointment. William Meyer with the Fire Employees Retirement Board. Is William Meyer here in the audience? Okay, Karen, come forward. Name and address for the record.
Good evening, council. I'm Karen Ronzival. I'm the retirement plan administrator for the three Rockledge retirement plans, 3695 Indian River Drive in Cocoa. Bill Meyer is not here tonight because he was called in overtime, so he, so he is on duty. But he has submitted an application for appointment as the resident member to the Rockledge Fire Employees Retirement Board. We've had conversations. I think he's very interested in serving in this capacity. He's a, a younger member of the retirement plan and we certainly need to fill that vacancy.
Okay. Personally, I have no problem with, uh, Mr. William Meyer. The only problem I have is he's also an employee of the city and we have five employees on that board right now. And I think we should have a resident that's not employed by the fire department, in my opinion, on that board. But it's entirely up to the city council what they decide to do. That's my opinion.
I share that same sentiment. It is a citizen's role on this particular one, not an additional employee. So I had the same concerns.
Karen, how long has this position been vacant?
It's been vacant probably 18 months. I mean, it's been a long time and, and certainly we have, you know, tried to solicit residents and, you know, it can be hard to find someone who, who's willing to serve. It is a, it is a huge responsibility. Mr., you know, Mr. Meyer, yes, he is an employee. Yes, he is a firefighter. He is also a resident.
I understand that part, but, um, I, I just have a problem with it myself personally, but it's entirely up to this council how this is voted on. What is the term? What's the term?
It would be, uh, filling the remainder of an, of an open term. The, our terms run for four years, but he would just be fulfilling the, the remainder of the open term, which I believe expires in January 2020. So, a year, a year and a month.
Okay. Anybody else have anything on this?
I, I share your, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Just questioning if that affects the operations of the committee by not having that seat filled.
I didn't hear what you said.
Does it affect the operation of the committee not having that seat filled?
Annually, a police and fire plans have to submit annual reports to the State Division of Retirement. And for the past two years, we've been called out on the fact that, hey, when are you going to get this vacancy filled? You know, sometimes it presents, um, a little bit of a challenge in trying to get a quorum. I can remember probably one, one occasion where we had to reschedule, um, a quarterly meeting because we are also required by statute to have not less than four quarterly meetings a year. And so we, we got to plug it in some, you know, sometime where we can, can reach that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Forrester?
Um, I, I share your concern about not having a civilian in the position, but I think since we're looking at an unexpired term that's going to be running about two years, and it's been empty for almost two years, I think we'd be better off filling it with what we have available. I'm not meaning to imply that it is a bad way, that this is a bad person to put in there, but I would rather have a civilian. Um, but I will, uh, I will support, uh, Mr. Meyer.
Okay. Anybody else? I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I move to appoint William Meyer to the Fire Employees Retirement Board as legal resident member.
We have a motion? Do we have a second? Motion dies without a second. So we either move on, Mr. City Attorney, or do we make another vote?
I don't know. Do you have any other people who have applied for it? So there's nobody else to appoint. It remains vacant until the council.
Okay.
I'm sure the city staff started counting the paperwork.
Okay. For folks in the audience, we're looking for a resident in the city of Rockledge that could sit on our retirement board for our firemen. You're talking about four meetings a year? Four meetings a year. So anybody who wants to volunteer, feel free to come forward to the city on our website and, and there's applications on the website and you're welcome to apply. We encourage you to apply. Let's put it that way. Alright, let's move on with this agenda. Unfinished business, none. Consent business. Who wants to give me consent business? Oh, first of all, I want to remove E from consent business, so it won't be A, B, C, and D.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I move for the approval of these consent business items. A, purchase of Scott X3 SCBA with CGA and Scott RIT PAC 3 for the Department of Public Safety. I, amendments to the Laborers International Union of North America, LIUNA, agreement with the city. Purchase of pack more rear loader sanitation vehicle for Public Works and travel authorization to the Florida League of Cities for elected municipal officials, IEMO4, municipal leadership, December 8 and 9 in Orlando for council and Dasky.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. This is consent business. There is no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The reason I pulled out E, approval of the travel authorization for the city manager, I wanted to give somebody else an opportunity to go in place of the city manager for the Florida League of Cities 57th Annual Legislative Conference. Is there anybody? And usually Pat went, and I know Ted's going.
Been approved, yes.
But Ted, Ted's already been approved to go and usually Pat goes and he represents us with the League of Cities. Is there anybody else that would like to, um, step up or else we can send the city manager?
This is the legislative conference. It's not the annual conference. They are different. This is where they're discussing the policy that the Florida League of Cities is going to push and promote. So they're significantly different events.
Okay.
They're both good. They're just different.
Okay.
And this is the policy groups.
Okay.
Pretty much.
I, I've been selected by the president of four League of Cities to be on the utilities board. So that's why I need to be there.
Yes.
And I appreciate city support in my efforts in that area. But I also pick up other things like the new constitutional amendments and charter things that are going on. I can report back on that.
And I appreciate that. And, and I know you do and I, I do appreciate that. But I'm giving somebody else an opportunity instead of us sending the city manager. If anybody else don't want to go, we will send the city manager. Everybody okay with sending the city manager? I need a motion to approve travel authorization for city manager.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I move to approve the travel authorization for the city manager to the League of Cities Annual Legislative Conference.
I second that motion. I'm calling for the question.
We have a motion? We have a second. The question's been called for. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. New business, none. Petitions, remonstrances, and communications. At this time, is there anybody in the audience that would like to come forward and talk to the city of Rockledge about anything to do with the city of Rockledge? We're here for you. Come forward, ma'am. Did you fill out a card in the back, ma'am? Then you can do that afterwards, but make sure you do give it to the city clerk. Your name and address for the record.
Certainly. Good evening. My name is Sammy Brown Martin. I am a candidate for the Rockledge City Council, seat three, and I appreciate this opportunity to greet you this evening. And I would like for your consideration on next Tuesday, which is November 7. I was born, raised in Rockledge. I'm a graduate of Rockledge High School. I have served this city for over 30 years. After returning home, I won't say the year, but over 30 years. I've been on the board of adjustments. I've been on the code enforcement board. I've also been the coordinator for neighborhood watch programs in this great city. So I would like for your consideration on next Tuesday, November 7, to vote Sammy Brown Martin for Rockledge City Council, seat three, and I would like to give you my literature for further consideration. And thank you so much for this opportunity.
You could do that, Sammy. After the meeting, give us the, your, your literature. And usually this is not how it's done, but I have no problem with you introducing yourself because I truly didn't know who you were.
Okay, thank you.
I've never met you before. But usually candidates that run, they, they make appointments with the council.
Okay.
And come meet us and we'll talk about what we know about the city and what you know about the city. And the more you're informed, the better candidate you're going to be.
Certainly.
So definitely, um, reach out to each one of us. There's seven of us here. And city manager, I assume you've already met with the city manager?
Yes, sir.
Good. You'll learn a lot there too.
Yes, sir.
You'll learn a lot with the city clerk. You'll learn a lot with our city attorney as well.
Thank you.
But reach out, feel free to reach out to any one of us. We'll talk to you at any time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Bye-bye. Anybody else wants to talk to the city about anything, city council about anything? None of the Boy Scouts? We had one back there that was vocal a while ago. Doesn't want to be vocal now? Okay, let's move on. Report, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things. Um, we've received an invitation to go to the Boys and Girls Club Annual Faces of the Future Fundraising Breakfast on Wednesday, November 8, starting at 7:30 a.m. I was just wondering if council, if you'd like me to query you individually, I can, but I need to submit our RSVP if any of us are planning to attend. It's, uh, Wednesday, November 8.
Thank you.
Sure, starting at 7:30 a.m.
Yeah, reach out to individuals.
Okay.
And see who wants to go.
Okay, Mayor.
And who can go. I know everybody's schedule is getting pretty booked this time of the year.
Absolutely. I will do that, Mayor and council. I'll reach out to each of you. Uh, next item is, um, of course, as we all know, Hurricane Irma damaged all of the docks on the, the riverfront for the city of Rockledge, and that included the Valencia Dock. And so the county has reached out and they're going to submit that, uh, for some insurance money for potential repair. And I just would ask council's direction if I would proceed to work with the county to see how much insurance money there will be and then what repairs could be done for that insurance money. Or if council, uh, would rather perhaps not rebuild that dock and have that land, if you will, right by the dock become just green space and a very small park. So I was just hoping for council's direction this evening.
Well, I'm going to get it over with right now. Everybody knows how I feel about that dock. And, uh, I have no problem with if insurance will pay to have it replaced, but I will never vote for one penny of taxpayers' money going towards that dock. And that's entirely up to this city council. But me as the mayor, I will never vote for one penny being paid for that dock out of taxpayers' money. Do we have any other response from the council?
I'd just like to see how much insurance money we're getting.
Definitely. If they're going to pay, insurance is going to pay for it. I have no problem with it, but... Everybody else? Anybody else want to say anything?
Okay.
So you have your direction.
I do, Mayor. Thank you. And then the last item is just to get a few dates on council's calendar. We all know the calendars are filling up and the holidays are fast approaching. So, and we can email y'all, but December 2nd is Light Up Rockledge at 6 p.m. here in City Hall.
We expect all the Boy Scouts there too.
December 2nd.
December 2nd at 6 p.m.
2nd, 6 p.m.
Then help me light the Christmas tree out front.
And December, December 9th is our annual holiday parade, Christmas parade, starting at Rockledge High School and going down towards the village. Be there at 5:30 p.m. And then December 14th is the annual employee dinner at 4 p.m., uh, McClarty Park.
4 p.m.
4 p.m., McClarty Park. And then please don't forget, November 9th, uh, is the annual, well, yeah, annual food truck bazaar down in Rockledge Square in front of Planet Fitness.
November the 9th?
November 9th.
What time does that start?
5 p.m., Mayor. 5 to 8 p.m.
For those of you in the audience that have never experienced that, that's really neat. They have all the food trucks. And they come and they make a circle and you just go around and you buy food and it's, it's really great. There's a lot of good food, a lot of good trucks there. And that's November 9th.
I concur, Mr. Mayor.
It's good. The, uh, the employee dinner is the 15, the 14? 14.
14.
I have a conflict that day with another event, but I will be there at 4, but I will have to leave at 5:30.
That concludes my report, Mayor.
Okay. Uh, city attorney litigation report, none. Reports from Diaz, city clerk.
Just a reminder about the food truck bazaar. Please come out.
Just a reminder about the food truck bazaar, please come out and enjoy it, um, it's always a good time, we'll have music as usual. Good time for all.
Good. City Attorney.
Um, you should recall that we passed a moratorium on the location of medical marijuana dispensing facilities within the city, it sunsets New Year's Eve of this year, um, the statute's been passed, the administrative rules have been put in play, uh, they are being litigated at this, at this time, um, however, we need to essentially, the council needs to make a decision, uh, there are essentially two choices, the state reserved to itself almost everything to do with the location and the permitting and so on and so forth, but they left it to us as a municipality to do one of two things, we can either forbid them from being within the city limits of the city of Rockledge, uh, this is a decision that is fraught with the potential for litigation, uh, the second one that they left is that we can cite these facilities in the same districts and areas that we allow pharmacies to exist. Alex and I have sat down and gone over the maps and, and tried to figure out where the locations would be, and we could have that information for you, uh, but we need to make a decision sometime, uh, before the end of November so that we can use the two December meetings to, uh, take whatever action the council wants to, wants to do, but those are essentially your two choices.
You're talking about setting up, um, a place to sell it, right? To sell the medical marijuana?
Medical marijuana.
What about growing it?
That has been completely, uh, taken care of and has been excluded back to the state of Florida.
So, we have no say so on that?
Licensing, growth, uh, you name it, that they have left us those two things to do, one of those two, that's it.
Okay. So you're looking for direction from us now to get this thing ready for December?
If, we're going to, we have another meeting in November, and, um, I would think that the council members, this is something that you might want to chew on and even talk with me individually, not together, uh, but at your, at your leisure to ask if I can answer in a little bit more detail any questions you might have.
Okay.
Same with Alec, uh, she's been instrumental in figuring out if we're going to be putting it into the same areas as pharmacies, what, what, what it would look like.
Does that, does that also mean that the pharm- existing pharmacies could start selling too?
Uh, well, they're not going to be, they can't.
They can't?
Uh, marijuana is still a Schedule One drug, drug with the United States federal government.
Oh, the money.
All pharmacies are licensed and controlled by the federal government, uh, if they touched that, they would lose their license, so there's also another problem with the money, uh, because almost every bank in the United States is FDIC insured, if they were to take the funds from the sale of marijuana and put it into the stream, they would lose their FDIC insurance, so, you know, there are some substantial problems between the conflicting laws between the states and the federal government, but, um, again, we, our, our ability to do anything is, is very limited by what the state has given us, uh, you know, just like firearms, they did the same thing, they had taken to themselves the complete regulation of firearms and ammunition in the state, well, they've done the same thing with, with marijuana, essentially.
Okay. Okay, so, the, what we have to do is each individual needs to talk to the, uh, city attorney and get educated on what we can and cannot do, and then we're going to have to make a decision by next council meeting on what direction to give the city attorney for our ordinance. Okay?
Okay.
Anything else, city attorney?
Uh, we can just put it on the next agenda then.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Nothing else. Councilman Hartson.
Evening. Uh, November twentieth and twenty-first, we're continuing our celebration of the hundredth anniversary of Saint Mary's, and the bishop will be coming back to bless a significant statue that is being placed on Saint Mary's grounds, uh, recognizing that hundred-year anniversary, uh, they couldn't get it through customs fast enough for us, so we had a party, and now we're bringing the statue. Um, and today I had fun going to golf school, and we were putting shoes on for the Nest Herbert Shoe Fund, the Quanis Club was doing that, and only got to tie on one pair of shoes, but I got the chance to talk to kids, and that's always a lot of fun. The, uh, we gave some shoes the way down in Imagine, down in Melbourne, Palm Bay, in Hundred Ninety-seven Bear, so it's a significant effort, and we're, we're going to push our hu- put out our hundred-thousandth pair of shoes sometime early next year, that this has been a major effort for forty years, so I wanted to recognize that, um, right here in Rockledge. Uh, also, the key club at Rockledge High School is sponsoring AK Kids Club at Anderson Elementary, trying to get kids involved in, uh, community service, so we'll see what that turns into, but their first meeting is tomorrow at three o'clock, so I'll probably show up there and cheer them on, uh, that's all I had, sir.
All right, thank you, Councilman Dasky.
Uh, just a, a quick thank you to the, um, city and the Rockledge Fire Department for inviting us along to their annual Halloween delivery of candy to the children, uh, did that last night, uh, was a very enjoyable time, and happy to do it, and thank you again. I'm clear.
Dr. Smith.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I pass.
Dr. Ferguson.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, thank you, a few things, I just want to kind of share, I had the opportunity to attend the, um, second session of the Citizens Academy, their graduation was on Saturday, and, uh, my wife and I actually had the opportunity to attend the very first session, and I just want to say hats off again to Director Lasada and all of his staff that assisted during that time, uh, very well done, very well done, we really enjoyed that opportunity to be with you all on Saturday. Also, I want to recognize, of course, the Boy Scouts that are here, of course, Councilman O'Neill, I'm sure will share some things, but I just wanted to say, great job to our young people, I was actually a Boy Scout as well, here, here in the city of Rockledge where I was born and raised, and met often, weekly, I believe it was, at the United Methodist Church, and to see you, uh, young men out here, and as well as all of those that volunteered to assist with the Boy Scouts, hats off to you, congratulations, thank you for what you do.
Scott, you were, you were a, a Boy Scout?
I was a Boy Scout, absolutely.
Wow. Were you an Eagle Scout?
I didn't make it that far, but.
Okay, I'm impressed.
Thank you.
I learned something about you today.
Yes, sir.
Frank Forrester.
Um, I'll just say a word to the Boy Scouts, and I also was a Boy Scout, I didn't make Eagle either.
Wow.
But I spent several years in the Boy Scouts, um, I'll offer my help for you if any of you guys want to work on, certainly your, your civic merit badge, but also, surprisingly enough, I can probably help out with your geology merit badges, so, you know how to get in touch with me, and, uh, I'll be glad to, uh, help you work on those if you would like, or anything else I can.
Got it. Deputy Mayor.
Yes, sir, uh, I am just tickled to death to see all the scouts here tonight, I got to tell you, this, it's what I live for, if I can, can I get all those with Cub Scout PAC 701 to stand up so we can see who's who? This is from Saint Luke's, Merritt Island, uh, they're working on some Weeblow requirements, thank you, gentlemen. Now, how about Troop Three Twenty-One, Rockledge United Methodist Church, please rise, leaders as well.
Excellent.
They're working on some first-class requirements as well as citizenship in the community, uh, thank you, gentlemen, both groups, if you didn't sign my list for my city clerk, don't leave till I get your name on here, uh, don't make her mad. Uh, just for the, for the council's information and for the rest of the audience, scouting for food starts November the fourth, the Boy Scouts and the Cub Scouts will be handing out the little, uh, t-shirt bags on a lot of doors in the city of Rockledge, they will come back one week later on Veterans Day, November the eleventh, I don't know who picked those days, uh, they'll be picking up those cans of, and boxes of food, I will share with you that last year, the Challenger District, which is basically Vieira North, picked up one-hundred-and-seventy-thousand pounds of food that went into local food banks, it's not a pound or three, it's a lot, South County, Melbourne, and Palm Bay, and South Beaches did two-hundred-thousand pounds of food, this is the largest food drive in the Brevard County every year. Uh, additionally, on the, the Boy Scouts, we finally finished the delivery of forty-three reservation boxes for each of the pavilions in the central sector of Brevard County, they go on the pavilions to let somebody know that that pavilion has been reserved for the day, and you don't go in at nine o'clock thinking that nobody's going to use it and start your party, yet somebody else has already reserved it, it's advanced notice, uh, that was four different Eagle Scout projects. Last Saturday, Rockledge United Methodist Church, two poles, four bat boxes were installed in the back of the church property to help control mosquitoes. Uh, Ken, I'll be coming to see you, if this is okay with the city manager, I had one of my scouts approach me for bicycle racks at city parks for their Eagle Scout project, and I'd like to work out some coordination with that one. Troop Three Twenty-One has had twenty-one Eagle Scouts since October two thousand twelve, I was also a Boy Scout, like my two companions here, I didn't make it either, but, but a lot of people are making it, uh, you just have to give them the opportunity, uh, what else? I think I'm done, do not forget to sign those sheets of paper, because I, there's a lot of y'all, I didn't get your names, thank you, I'm done.
I was never a Boy Scout for you guys out there in the audience, but I had two older sisters, and my mother was a Brownie Scout leader, so, when I was young and my, my older sisters were Brownies, then I wanted a Brownie shirt, so I got a Brownie shirt.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I don't believe that at all, man. I'd have kept that one to myself.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm proud of that, guys, I'm proud of that, okay?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Let me say this, a hundred years ago, we had a gentleman here in Cocoa named Mr. Will Monroe, who's deceased, and I had the privilege of serving as a Boy Scout back there then, but I think these young men should be commended, and let's give them a round of applause.
Mr. Chairman.
Can I ask the Boy Scouts a question that just?
No.
Wait, what? Can I ask the Boy Scouts a quick question?
Can you?
Hang on a minute, okay. I just wanted to mention, I showed a picture to Pat O'Neill before the meeting of my also being in the Boy Scouts, and we were loading up a food truck to help, uh, survivors of Hurricane Betsy fifty years ago, so.
Wow.
It's been a while.
Wow. Let me just finish first, Frank.
Sure.
And I'd also, um, attended the Citizens Academy graduation on Saturday, I recognized the students and, and gave them pens, city pens, and I want to recognize one of our graduates in the audience, Fran Nikovitz, you want to stand up, Fran? Show everybody your pen.
[applause]
Anyone that needs to get a class for the next session next year?
Yep.
September eleventh?
Yep. Thank you, Fran, I just wanted to recognize you for that, I appreciate you coming, and I encouraged, I encouraged her last Saturday to come to a city council meeting, she, I don't even think she knew where City Hall was, did you?
[inaudible]
Okay, but thank you for coming, I appreciate it. There's nothing else, oh, Frank, go ahead, ask your question.
Um, several years ago, uh, when my daughter was about twelve or thirteen, she was in the Girl Scouts, and she was not happy with the Girl Scouts, uh, she wanted to join the Boy Scouts because they did cooler stuff, and I read in the paper the other day that the Boy Scouts are going to start admitting girls, uh, show of hands, how many of you guys think that's a good idea? And how many of you are just not real sure? Yeah, okay, just checking, wasn't trying to start a war or anything, just, just curious, because my daughter was really upset when she was told she could not join the Boy Scouts, because she wanted to go camping and do cool stuff, and the Girl Scout troop that she had been in was not doing that sort of stuff.
If there's nothing else before this, Council, I adjourn at seven-twenty-five.